The session is now called to order. Please all rise for the singing of the national anthem. Please remain standing for a prayer to be delivered by Honorable Maria Lourdes Agabao of the 4th District of Isabela.
Heavenly Father, you said, "For where two or three are gathered in my name, there am I in the midst of them." Lord, with faith in our hearts, we invoke your divine presence to guide us as we tackle important pieces of legislation. May our work reflect your wisdom for what is best for our people and that it is in accordance to thy will, not ours. In this Christmas season, may we always be reminded to focus on the true meaning of the celebration. May each new day be a start to a bright beginning and an opportunity for us to be instruments of peace, love, and faith. Lord, we also pray for your abundant blessings and graces as we celebrate the birthday of one of our esteemed colleagues, our beloved Deputy Speaker Evelina Escudero, or simply Tita Evi to all of us, as she marks another milestone on the 16th. May she be blessed with many, many more years of continued good health filled with love, happiness, peace, and prosperity. We ask this through our Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you, Honorable Agabao. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we defer the calling of the role.
The calling of the role is deferred. Any objection? Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we defer the approval of the Journal of the previous session.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. I defer the approval of the Journal. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports. So moved.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read all the bills for first reading and refer to the committee.
Reference of Business, Bills on First Reading, House Bill Number 8743, establishing the Passenger Protection Office in all major airports in the Philippines. Representative Pico.
To the Committee of Transportation.
House Bill Number 8744, establishing the Regional Courts of Labor Relations under the supervision of the Supreme Court, thereby abolishing the NLRCC. Representative Pico.
To the Committee of Labor Unemployment.
House Bill Number 8745, providing assistance to fresh graduates by waiving government fees and charges collected in connection with documentary requirements for employment. Representative Pico.
To the Committee of Labor Unemployment.
House Bill Number 8746, prescribing school bus safety standards. Representative Pico.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number 8747, amending Section 46 of Republic Act Number 8749. Representative Pico.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill Number 8748, providing for stiffer fines and penalties for illegal disposal of waste materials and violation of other prohibited acts. Representative Pico.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill Number 8749, creating a National Motor Vehicle Safety Administration. Representative Pico.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization and the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number 8750, providing for a comprehensive nursing law towards quality healthcare system. Representative Pico.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 8751, strengthening the Sustainable Sanitation Program by reorganizing the sanitation unit of the DOA. Representative Pico.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 8752, strengthening the government's efforts towards the treatment and rehabilitation of drug dependents. Representative Pico.
To the Committee on Dangerous Drugs.
House Bill Number 8753, penalizing the imposition of no permit, no exam policy or any such policy that prohibits students of post-secondary and higher education from taking their midterm or final exams. Representative Pico.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Number 8754, providing stiffer penalties for theft, robbery, and destruction of public school property. Representative Pico.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill Number 8755, establishing a one-stop shop for prioritized structural projects. Representative Kuah.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill Number 8756, amending Section 45, Chapter 10, Book 4 of EO Number 292 as amended. Representative Bilyarin.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill Number 8759, mandating 13 to 14 months benefits for all pensioners of the GSIS and SSAS. Representative Salo and Paul Hernandez.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill Number 8760, strengthening the Philippine Public Safety College as a national institute for public safety and homeland security education. Representative Salo and Paul Hernandez.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill Number 8761, mandating the inclusion of road use etiquette and safety education in the Corrélivo K-12 Program. Representative Koresma.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 8763, regulating the use of roads for safe, fast, and economic transport. Representative Fernando.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number 8765, establishing a 100-bed hospital in Taguayang Quezon to be known as Taguayang Public Hospital. Representative Angelina Tan.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 8766, amending Section 48 of Republic Act Number 9267. Representative Robero.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill Number 8767, strengthening the Constitution and Rights of Government Employment. Representative Mendoza.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill Number 8768, amending Republic Act Number 10868. Representative Bilaferte.
To the Special Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill Number 8769, reorganizing the Cooperative Development Authority. Representative Bilaferte.
To the Committee on Cooperatives Development.
House Bill Number 8770, defining and penalizing street sexual harassment and public spaces harassment. Representative Bilaferte.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill Number 8771, enhancing the safety of pedestrians. Representative Bilaferte.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number 8772, prohibiting the dumping of sewage sludge and industrial waste into seawater. Representative Bilaferte.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill Number 8773, providing a framework for citizen participation in the legislative process through the use of the internet. Representative Bilaferte.
To the Committee on People’s Participation.
House Bill Number 8774, establishing the Philippine Blood Disease and Transfusion Center. Representative Bilaferte.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 8775, amending RE Number 10152. Representative Bilaferte.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 8776, prohibiting the disposal of electronic devices at solid-based management facilities. Representative Bilaferte.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill Number 8777, strengthening the National Research Council of the Philippines of the DOAST. Representative Bilaferte.
To the Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill Number 8778, strengthening the Philippine Sports Commission. Representative Bilaferte.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 8779, protecting, promoting, and supporting breastfeeding practices through proper infant and young child feeding by regulating the trade, marketing, and promotion of breast milk, substitute, and food products for infants and young children. By Representative Bilaferte.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 8780, converting the Bacoor National High School, William Maria Annex in Malino to Bacoor Cabito International Science High School to be known as the Bacoor National High School. Representative Revilia.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8781, establishing a provincial office of the CHED in the province of Zamboanga Cibugay. Representative Hofer.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 8782, renaming Hasinto Borha National High School to Kantaloan Technological and Vocational High School. Representative Relampagos.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8783, providing for a comprehensive safe drinking water quality management. Representative Gonzales Arelo Dong.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 8787, establishing a one-stop shop for priority infrastructure projects. Representative Kuah.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 8788, providing for a mandatory procurement of national food authority of all palay produced by the local rice farmers via direct purchase. Representative Pancho.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 8789, protecting seafarers who suffer serious injury or death and their families. Representative C. Alvarado.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
Resolutions. House Resolution 2357, directing the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization and Other Appropriate Committees to investigate on the manner of which properties owned and managed by the government corporations and public entities are being leased out. Representative Padilla Belmonte Ricardo, Canama Lopez, Bernur, Bilyarin Bertis Montoro, Bilaro Laxon, Mending Solon, and Lopez Manuel Luis.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2359, expressing warm facilitations and congratulations to Mr. Man Healy, Chairman and Peace Advocate of Heavenly Culture, World Peace, Restoration of Light for successful Fourth Annual Commemoration of the World Alliance of Religious Peace Summit in Seoul, Korea. Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2360, expressing warm congratulations and commendation to Mr. Nanito Denaria Jr., also known as the Filipino Flash, for winning the WBA Super Bantamweight Champion. Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Resolution 2361, urging the House Committee on Human Rights to review the resolution of the human rights victims' claims, board denying the claim of Jorica Francisco Lumbad and other workers of Latondena Distillers Incorporated for abuses committed during martial law. Representative Lopez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2362, informing the DBM that the House has rescinded its approval of House Bill 7436 entitled "Abolishing the Road Board and Providing for the Distribution and Management of the Motor Vehicle Users' Charge and Collections." Representative Rodriguez Maximo, Tehada, Cirile, Xiao, Amatong, Demaporo, Mohamed Khalid, Sackdalan, Pimentel, Bautista Bendigan, Hernandez, Ferdinand, Achiron Almonte, Almonte, Albison, Barber, Skagas, Caminero, Demaporo, Abdullah, Florendo Fortun, Gonzaga, Magundadato Sajin, Matugas Mendoza, Paciao, Papandayan, Pichai, Plaza, Romualdo Sahali, Swan Sing, Horacio, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Yu Zamora, Maya Carmen, Revilia, Almario Semah.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Messages from the Senate. Message dated December 11, 2018, informing the House that the Senate on even date adopted SCR Number 15.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated December 11, 2018, informing the House that on December 10, 2018, the Senate designated Senators Poe Escudero Zubirro and Tevez as conferrers to the bicameral conference committee on the disagreeing votes on HB 7385.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated December 11, 2018, informing the House that on even date, the Senate approved the conference committee report on the bicameral conference committee on the disagreeing votes on HB 8302.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Reports. Committee Report 1023, Committee on Labor Unemployment on House Bill 8784.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 1024, Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 1025 and 1026 of the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 1027 on the Committee on Economic Affairs.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 1028 of the Committee on Economic Affairs and Ways and Means.
To the Committee on Rules.
Additional Reference of Business, Bills on First Reading, House Bill 8790, an act requiring all transportation network companies and operators and service providers for the transport network vehicle services to acquire comprehensive third-party liability insurance coverage for the welfare of the riding public. Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 8792, an act declaring December 11 of every year a special non-working holiday of the Republic of the Philippines to be known as International Friendship Cooperation and Diplomacy Day in the Philippines. Representative Evardone Dasa Noel.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 8793, an act granting SI Power Corporation a franchise to construct, install, establish, operate, and maintain distributor power technologies and mini-grid systems throughout the Philippines to improve access to sustainable energy. Representative Abu.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
Resolution, House Resolution 2364 entitled "A Resolution Commending the Administration of His Excellency President Roa R. Duterte for the Return of the Historical Belts of Balenyaga to the Philippines." Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Concurrent Resolution Number 25, concurrent resolution giving consent to His Excellency Eduardo Jose A. De Vega, former Ambassador Extraordinary and Plenipartarian of the providing assistance to new graduates by waiving government fees and charges allocated in connection with the insurance of documents required in application for employment. Representative Things Swan Sing, Estralita, Bilyarica, Noel, and Tupas.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
On the motion.
Then, not only this representation, but all members of the House should be given a copy of the metric so that they will be aware what are the amendments being proposed and to give us time also to propose our own amendments.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for suspension.
Session suspended. You want me?
Joseph G. Gil Eswari.
He's been out of his mind for three years.
He's been out of his mind for three years.
Uh, may I say something?
I'm gonna go down to my room.
For a second.
No, 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 no. It's also.
Madam Speaker.
I'm sorry.
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 I was thinking, I don't know, I don't know.
I don't know what I'm existing, but you have to, you have to, you just walk through. I see if, but like, if you feel like it, I make it, I can buy it, I can have it. I don't know. I don't know. I see, but like, if you feel like it, I make it, I can buy it, I can have it. I know, I, do you push it by order or you get? I find the, ah, I was again, I was again. I'll, I'll fix it. I'll, I'll, I'll check it out, I'll report it, but I didn't tell you that.
Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to call the roll of members.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members: Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Agabao, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantaleón, Amante, Amaton, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbizon, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagatzing, Bagilac, Banal, Barbers, Barzaga, Batawil, Batucabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertiz, Biazón, Billiones, Viron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulut Bigtang, Tagas, Calderón, Calixterubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilaú, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Queetano, Celeste, Seráfica, Seriles, Chávez. Chipeco, Co, Coanco, Coliantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisólogo, Cuah, Curesma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Hermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Feder Juliet, Feder Luís, Feriol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortune, Fortuno, Fuente Belia, Garbin, Garcés, García Guendolin, García Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mart, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera Di, Hoffer, Halus Hoss, Javier, Co, Conghun, Labad Labad, Lacson, Lagman, Lanete, Laogan, Lazatin, Leatson, Lee, Limkaychong, Lobregat, López Benher, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangudadatos Uharto, Mangudadatos Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Meliana, Mendín, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, No Grales, No Lasko, Núñez Malanyaón, Oaminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paciao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabás, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramírez Sato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilia, Roapuno, Robes, Roquamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Román, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Saqdalan, Sagarbaría, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salón, Sambar, Sandoval, San Copan, Santos Rehto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Savillano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tam Bunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Tianco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalí, Unabia, Unab, Unico, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villaraza Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melacio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora María Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that two hundred thirty-nine members responded to the call.
With two hundred thirty-nine members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a coram. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we put into the record the explanation requested by the Honorable Robert Barbers for his affirmative vote. And his explanation is in writing, copy of which should be submitted to the office of the Secretary General, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, at this point, I move to recognize the guests of the Honorable Sherni Tan Partilis Kusug Tausug. They are participants of the team building on December twelve, twenty eighteen. Madam Speaker.
The guest of Congressman Sherni Tan, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider Resolution Number, House Resolution Number two, three, four, seven, and the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said resolution.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the resolution.
House Resolution two, three, four, seven. Resolution urging President Rodrigo Ardotete to pursue negotiations with the government of the Russian Federation towards formulating a framework or instrument that will ensure the promotion and protection of the welfare and rights of overseas Filipino workers.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution two, three, four, seven.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The resolution is adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution number two, three, five, three, and let the Secretary General read the title of said resolution.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is requested to read the resolution.
House Resolution two, three, five, three. Resolution conveying to the Department of Foreign Affairs the concern in the manner by which the Immigration and Refugee Board, IRB of Canada, heard and eventually approved the ludicrous crime claim for refugee protection of a fugitive Philippine national.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt said resolution.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Resolution two, three, five, three is adopted. Majority Leader.
Move to suspend Madam Speaker for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
[Inaudible]
Majority Leader.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we take up items in the calendar of business for the day. These are bills on second reading.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The... It's a... The session is open for deliberation and debate. Majority Leader.
To sponsor the measure, Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the distinguished gentleman from the Third District of Leyte, the Honorable Vicente Veloso.
Honorable Vicente Veloso is recognized.
Madam Chair, Senior Vice Chair of the Committee on Justice, I adopt the sponsorship, the explanatory note rather, of House Bill 8646 as my sponsorship speech for House Bill 8646. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, with that, we move that we have the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech of the measure.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The sponsors... The sponsorship of the House Bill 8646 is amended, as approved?
No, Madam Speaker. There being no interpolations, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The... We close the motion. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The period of amendments is open.
Madam Speaker, there being no amendments, committee or individual, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8646.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The... All those in favor say nay, say aye. Those who are not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8646 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill Number 8658 in Committee Report Number 958.
Is there any objection? We direct the Secretary General to read House Bill 8658.
House Bill 8658, and act creating three additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the Fourth Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of Catanouan, Province of Quezon, and appropriating funds therefore. Amending for the purpose, Section 14E of Batasampambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Leader. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor the measure, again, we move that we recognize the Honorable Vicente Veloso.
Honorable Vicente Veloso is now recognized.
Madam Speaker, I likewise adopt the explanatory note of House Bill 8658 as my sponsorship speech on that bill.
With that, Madam Speaker, I move that we have the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech of the measure.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no interpolations, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no amendments, individual or that coming from the committee, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8658.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Those who are in favor say aye. Those who are not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8656 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill Number 8659 in Committee Report Number 959.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 8659.
House Bill 8659, and act creating four additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the Eleventh Judicial Region and appropriating funds therefore. Amending for the purpose, Section 14L of Batasampambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor the measure, I move that we recognize the Honorable Vicente Veloso.
Again, Honorable Vicente Veloso is recognized.
Madam Speaker, I also adopt the explanatory note in House Bill 8659 as my sponsorship speech, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, we join the gentleman in his motion to have the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no interpolations, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
There being no amendments, Madam Speaker, committee or individual, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8659.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Those who are in favor say aye. Those who are not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8659 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill Number 8660 in Committee Report Number 960.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that...
House Bill 8660, and act creating one additional branch of the Municipal Trial Court for the City of Maasin, Province of Southern Leyte, and appropriating funds therefore. Amending for the purpose, Section 29 of Batasampambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Vicente Veloso to sponsor the measure.
Honorable Vicente Veloso is now recognized.
Madam Speaker, relative to the creation of one municipal trial court in the City of Maasin, Southern Leyte, I adopt explanatory note of House Bill 8660 as my sponsorship speech.
Madam Speaker, I move that we have the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
With no interpolations, Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
There being no amendments, Madam Speaker, committee or individual, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8660.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. Those who are in favor say aye. Those who are not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8660 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we are in receipt of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Numbers 4814 and 8554, and Senate Bill Number 2059, enhancing revenue administration and collection by granting a tax and amnesty on all unpaid internal revenue taxes imposed by the national government for taxable year 2017 and prior years with respect to a state tax, other internal revenue taxes, and tax on delinquencies. In accordance with our rules, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. We ratify said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we are in receipt of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 5675 and Senate Bill Number 2081, allowing the ratification of simulated birth records. In accordance with our rules, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. We ratify said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we are also in receipt of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 8110 and Senate Bill Number 192, mandating the Philippine Overseas Employment Administration to develop, publish, disseminate, and update a handbook on the rights and responsibilities of migrant workers. In accordance with our rules, Madam Speaker, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. We ratify said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we are also in receipt of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on the disagreeing votes on House Bill Number 6618, establishing a 100-bed capacity hospital in Barangay Habay 2 in the City of Bakoor, Province of Kabite, to be known as the Bakoor District Hospital. In accordance with our rules, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. We ratify said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the House and the Senate have approved on third reading, House Bill Number 8528 and Senate Bill Number 454, respectively, regulating the practice of occupational therapy in the Philippines. We have been informed that the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation is sponsor of House Bill Number 8528, as well as the authors thereof are in concurrence with the provisions of Senate Bill Number 454. In accordance with our rules, I move that we adopt Senate Bill Number 454 as amendment to House Bill Number 8528.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. We adopt Senate Bill Number 454 as amended and House Bill Number 8528. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we resume our consideration of items in the calendar of business for the day. Madam Speaker, I move that we take up House Bill Number 8661 in Committee Report Number 961 on second reading, and please direct our Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 8661.
House Bill 8661, and act creating six additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the Eleventh Judicial Region to be stationed in the City of Davao, and appropriating funds therefore. Amending for the purpose, Section 14L of Batasampambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor the measure, I move that we recognize the Honorable Vicente Veloso.
Honorable Vicente Veloso is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 8661 calls for the creation of six regional trial court branches in the City of Davao, Eleventh Judicial Region. I therefore adopt explanatory note for this bill as my sponsorship speech, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, I move that we have the explanatory note of the measure as the sponsorship speech.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no interpolations, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
There being no amendments, Madam Speaker, committee or individual, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8661.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. Those who are in favor of House Bill 8661 say aye. Those who are not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8661 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill Number 8662 in Committee Report Number 962.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
House Bill 8662, and act creating two additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the Eighth Judicial Region to be stationed in the City of Maasin and in the Municipality of Sogo, Province of Southern Leyte, and appropriating funds therefore. Amending for the purpose, Section 14I of Batasampambansa Bilang... Section 14I of Batasampamansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we have the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
We recognize Honorable Vicente Veloso for his sponsorship speech.
Madam Speaker, there is really a need for a creation of two branches of Regional Trial Courts in the city of Maasin and Sogo, and I adopt the explanatory note for House Bill 8662 as my sponsorship speech, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, I move that we have the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no interpolations, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no amendments, committee or individual, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8662.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Those who are in favor of House Bill 8662 say aye. Those who are not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8662 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill Number 8663, in Committee Report Number 963, and please direct Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Secretary General is requested to read House Bill 8663.
House Bill 8663, an act creating two additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the 7th Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of Tobigon, province of Bohol, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14H of Batasampamansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Vicente Veloso to sponsor the measure.
Honorable Vicente Veloso is recognized.
Madam Speaker, there is an equal need for us to create two branches of Regional Trial Courts in Tobigon, Bohol. I therefore adopt the explanatory note for House Bill 8663 as my sponsorship speech, Madam Speaker.
We join the gentleman, Madam Speaker, in his motion to have the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
There being no interpolations, Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no amendments, committee or individual, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8663.
Those who are in favor of House Bill 8663 say aye. Those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8663 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill Number 8664, in Committee Report Number 964, please direct our Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Secretary General is requested to read House Bill 8664.
House Bill 8664, an act creating five additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the National Capital Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Montinlupa, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14D of Batasampamansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Vicente Veloso to sponsor the measure.
We again recognize Honorable Vicente Veloso to sponsor House Bill 8664.
Madam Speaker, Montinlupa is one of the areas we have in National Capital Judicial Region that suffers a huge backlog in cases. I therefore adopt the explanatory note of House Bill 8664 as my sponsorship speech.
Madam Speaker, I move that we have the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
There being no interpolations, Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no amendments, committee or individual, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8664.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Those who are in favor of House Bill 8664 say aye. Those who are not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. 8664 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill Number 8665, in Committee Report Number 965, and please direct our Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is requested to read House Bill 8665.
House Bill 8665, an act creating one additional branch of the Regional Trial Court in the 10th Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of Villanueva, province of Misamis Oriental, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14K of Batasampamansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Vicente Veloso to sponsor the measure.
Again, we recognize Honorable Vicente Veloso.
Madam Speaker, there is a need for us to create one branch of Regional Trial Court seated in Villanueva, Misamis Oriental. I adopt the explanatory note for House Bill 8665 as my sponsorship speech on the matter.
Madam Speaker, I move that we have the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no interpolations, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
There being no amendments, Madam Speaker, committee or individual, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8665.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Those in favor of House Bill 8665 say aye. Those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8665 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up on second reading, House Bill Number 8666, in Committee Report Number 966.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is requested to read House Bill 8666.
House Bill 8666, an act creating one additional branch of the Regional Trial Court in the 12th Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of Malang, province of Cotabato, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14M of Batasampamansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor the measure, I move that we recognize the Honorable Vicente Veloso.
Again, we recognize Honorable Vicente Veloso.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Malang Cotabato needs one branch of Regional Trial Court. I adopt explanatory note of House Bill 8666 as my sponsorship on the matter, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we join the gentleman in his motion to have the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no interpolations, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no amendments, committee or individual, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8666.
Those in favor of House Bill 8666 say aye. Those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8666 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for suspension.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up business for Thursday and Friday, local bills, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up the omnibus approval on second reading of the following local bills. House Bill, House Bill Numbers 8724, 8725, 8726, 8729, 8730, 8731, 8732, 8735, 8736, 8212, 8757, 8762.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. There is an omnibus approval of all House Bills, 8724, 8725, 8726, 8729, 8730, 8731, 8732, 8735, 8736, 8212, 8757, and 8762, approved on second reading. Those who are in favor of omnibus approval say aye.
Madam Speaker, we have to go through the sponsorship. Before we proceed, Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Okay, is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
There being no interpolations, Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading the aforementioned local measures.
Okay, those who are in favor of the aforementioned bills say aye. Those who are not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. The aforementioned bills is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill Numbers 172, 8719, 8727, 8728, 8733, 8734, 8741, 8764, 8784, 8785, 8786, 8791, 8794, and 8795, as contained in the list to be submitted by Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Also, Madam Speaker, I move that we include as additional co-authors of the bills and resolutions that are pending in the committees, the members appearing in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules, after due verification of their requests for inclusion as co-authors of such bills and resolutions. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we resume consideration of the earlier motion for the approval of the rules of the House of Representatives of the 17th Congress, copies of which have been distributed earlier to the members of the House?
Is there any objection?
Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
As a...
Majority Leader.
Yes, Madam Speaker, may we recognize the Honorable Edselagman.
Okay, Honorable Edselagman is recognized.
As agreed upon with the Senior Deputy Majority Leader, this representation will make some, we propose some amendments to the rules of the House for the 17th Congress, and I am ready to propose the amendments.
We can go through the proposal of the gentleman, Madam Speaker, and we will see if they are acceptable to the House. May we know, Madam Speaker?
Subject to style and the situs where the amendment will be provided for, the following are the proposed amendments. One, the explanation of vote of a member during third reading shall be made immediately after such member shall cast his or her vote. This is reviving the old rules of the House.
Madam Speaker, may we go through the amendments one by one? To that, Madam Speaker, the status of the rules is that, there are two rules on that. If we are on nominal voting on third reading, then the explanation comes after the results have been announced. But if it is just nominal voting, because a member of the House asked for nominal voting, and one-fifth of the House acceded to a nominal voting, then the rule on nominal voting, that is, the rule on the explanation is that it is not done after the announcement of the rules. So, we would like to maintain the present status of the rules.
That's why we are making an amendment, Madam Speaker, because this will be nominal voting during third reading.
The sense of the committee, Madam Speaker, is that there is a difference, because we want to facilitate the voting, we don't want to disturb the voting when we are on nominal voting on third reading of a law. That is the difference, Madam Speaker. Because in fact, we have a rule that we don't want to interrupt the voting, so there is a difference, Madam Speaker.
This is not an interruption of the voting, Madam Speaker, it is a part of the voting, because this has been the rule since the 8th Congress until it was abandoned lately. Because there is a need for an immediate explanation of a vote of a member. We could not wait until the results are announced, because any explanation after the votes have been announced will be a post-mortem explanation. We should have an active explanation, and that should be immediately after a member... We should have an active explanation, and that should be immediately after a member has cast his vote.
I move for suspension, Madam Speaker.
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we lay on the table, that is, to set aside temporarily the motion for the adoption of the rules of the House of Representatives of the Seventeenth Congress. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we continue with the business for today and begin consideration of House Bill Number 8727. May we request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure?
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 8727. Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 8727.
House Bill 8727, an act requiring parents to plant two trees for every child born to them.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we recognize to sponsor the measure Representative Villanueva?
Representative, Honorable Villanueva is recognized.
Madam Speaker, may I move that the explanatory note attached in the bill be adopted as my sponsorship speech?
Madam Speaker, we join the honorable author, that we move that we adopt the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wish to interpolate on this said measure, I now move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move now that we open the period of amendment.
Is there an objection? The motion, the chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments, I now move that we close the period of amendment.
Is there an objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8727, as contained in Committee Report Number 1006. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there an objection? Chair here is none. Those who are in favor of House Bill 8727 say aye. Those who are not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. 8727 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we now move that we consider House Bill Number 8728 containing Committee Report Number 1007, and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure.
Is there an objection? The chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 8728.
House Bill 8728, an act requiring all graduating elementary, high school, and college students to plant at least ten trees each as a prerequisite for graduation.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor this said measure, may we recognize the Honorable Noel Villanueva?
Honorable Villanueva is recognized.
Again, Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note attached in the bill be adopted as my sponsorship speech.
Madam Speaker, we join the honorable author, that we move that the sponsorship speech be, the explanatory note be made as the sponsorship speech.
Is there an objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpolate on this said measure, may we move that we close the period of amendment, period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to propose amendments, and there being no committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
The chair, is there any objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8727, as contained in Committee Report Number 1007. So move, Madam Speaker.
All those in favor of House Bill 8728 say aye. Those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. House, House Bill 8728 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we are in receipt of the Bi-Camera Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill Number 8636 and Senate Bill Number 1850, institutionalizing a national integrated cancer control program. Madam Speaker, in accordance with the rules, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Camera Conference Committee Report.
Is there an objection? The chair here is none. Lieutenant Bill 180, 50, and House Bill 8636 is now ratified by the said Bi-Camera Conference Committee Report. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill Numbers 172, 8719, 8727...
Is there any, is there an objection? The chair here is none.
Madam Speaker, to continue, my apologies. 8728, 8733, 8734, 8741, 8764, 8784, 8785, 8786, 8791, 8794, and 8795, as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules. Madam Speaker, I move that we include as additional co-authors of the bills and resolutions that are pending in the committees, the members appearing in the list to be submitted also by the Committee on Rules after due verification of their request for inclusion as co-authors of such bills and resolutions.
Is there an objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up additional reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the reports and the measures.
The Secretary General is directed to read Committee Reports and other reference of business.
Additional reference of business, Committee Reports. Reports of the Committee on Games and Amusement regarding House Resolution 132, resolution congratulating and commending Marlon Tapales for winning the World Boxing Organization Bantamweight Championship in Ayutthu, Thailand. Representative Tambunting Dimoporo, and Dimoporo.
The Committee on Rules.
Report of the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, the Committee on Appropriations, and the Committee on Ways and Means. Committee Report Number 1032, House Bill Number 8795.
The Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up, House Concurrent Resolutions Number 23, as contained in the Committee Report Number 1026, and request that the Secretary General be directed to read this said resolution.
Is there an objection? The chair here is none. Secretary General is requested to read the bill.
House Concurrent Resolution 23, concurrent resolution approving the transfer, sale, or announce assignment of the controlling interest of Mindanao Islamic Telephone Company, Inc.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt the House Concurrent Resolution Number 23. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there an objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved. The motion is adopted, sorry.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we, we take up, consider House Concurrent Resolutions Number 25, and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of this said resolution.
The Secretary General is directed to read House Resolution Number 25.
House Concurrent Resolution 25, concurrent resolution giving consent to His Excellency Eduardo Jose A. de Vega, former Ambassador Extraordinary and Plenipotentiary of the Republic of the Philippines to Mexico from 31 March 2016 to 23 April 2018 to receive the award of the Orden Mexicana del Agila Azteca, Mexican Order of Aztec Eagle from the Government of Mexico.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt the House Concurrent Resolution Number 25. the House Concurrent Resolution Number 25. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. House Resolution 25 is now adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we consider House Bill Number 8734 as contained in Committee Report Number 1013.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 8734.
House Bill 8734, An Act Increasing the Benefits Granted to Science and Technology, S&amp;T Personnel of the Government, Amending for the Purpose Republic Act Number 8439, Otherwise Known as the Magra Carta for Scientists, Engineers, Researchers, and Other S&amp;T Personnel in the Government.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor this said measure, may we recognize the Honorable Michael Romero?
Honorable Mike Romero is recognized.
Madam Speaker, may we suspend a few. I withdraw my motion, Madam Speaker.
Motion withdrawn. Honorable Mike Romero is recognized.
Madam Speaker, we wish, I move to adopt the explanatory note of House Bill 5141 as our correction, Madam Speaker, I move to adopt the explanatory note of House Bill Number 8734. I so moved, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, we join the honorable author in adopting the explanatory note as a sponsorship speech of the said measure.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpret, I now move to close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to propose amendments and there being no committee amendments as well, I now move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House Bill Number 8734 as contained in Committee Report Number 1013.
All those who are in favor of House Bill 8734 say aye. Say aye. Those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. 8734 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we, I move to take that we take up House Bill Number 8764 as contained in Committee Report Number 1021 and the request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure.
The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 8764.
House Bill 8764, An Act Amending Section 8 of Republic Act 7042 as amended, otherwise known as the Foreign Investments Act of 1991.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we recognize the Honorable Gwendoline Garcia to sponsor this said measure.
Honorable Gwendoline Garcia is now recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to adopt the explanatory note for House Bill 8764 as my sponsorship speech.
We join the honorable author, Madam Speaker, and that we move that the explanatory note be made as the sponsorship speech.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpret, I now move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments, I now move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we approve on second reading House Bill Number 8764 as contained in Committee Report 1021. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Those in favor of House Bill 8764 say aye. Those does not approve say nay. The ayes have it. 8764 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up House Bill Number 8682 as contained in Committee Report Number 974 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure.
The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 8682.
House Bill 8682, An Act Expanding Access to Educational Services through the Establishment and Administration of Transitional Higher Education and Appropriating Funds Therefore.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor this said measure, I now move that we recognize the Honorable Paulo Javier.
Honorable Paulo Javier is recognized.
Madam Speaker, I would like to adopt the explanatory note of House Bill Number 8682. Madam Speaker.
We join, Madam Speaker, the honorable author and that we move that the explanatory note be made as a sponsorship speech.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpret, I now move to close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I now move to open the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to propose amendments or committee amendments, I now move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we approve on second reading House Bill Number 8682 as contained in Committee Report Number 974.
All those in favor of House Bill 8682 say aye. Those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8682 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we consider House Bill Number 8786 as contained in Committee Report Number 1025 and may you request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of this said measure.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is requested to read House Bill 8786.
House Bill 8786, An Act Renewing for Another Twenty-Five Years The Franchise Granted to Audiovisual Communicators Incorporated under Republic Act 8124 Entitled "An Act Granting Audiovisual Communicators Incorporated, A Franchise to Construct, Install, and Operate and Maintain Radio and Television Broadcasting Stations in the Philippines."
Madam Speaker, to sponsor this said measure, may we recognize the Honorable Franz Alvarez.
Honorable Franz Alvarez is recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note be entered as a sponsorship speech.
Madam Speaker, we join the honorable author and that we move that the explanatory note be made as a sponsorship speech.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpret, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendment.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to propose amendments and committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House Bill Number 8786 as contained in Committee Report Number 1025.
Those in favor of House Bill 8786, please say nay. Aye, sorry. Sorry, say aye. Those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8786 is now approved on second reading. I'm sorry. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we move that we we take up House Bill Number 8794 as contained in Committee Report Number 1030 and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of this said measure.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. Secretary General is requested to read House Bill 8794.
House Bill 8794, An Act Defining Gender-Based Street, Public Spaces, and Online Sexual Harassment, Providing Protective Measures and Prescribing Penalties Therefore.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor this said measure, may we recognize the Honorable Bernadette Herrera D.
Honorable Bernadette Herrera D is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we use the explanatory note as my sponsorship speech.
We join the honorable author, Madam Speaker, and that we move the explanatory note be made as a sponsorship speech.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpret, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments, I now move to close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we approve on second reading House Bill Number 8794 as contained in Committee Report Number 1030.
Those in favor of 8794 say aye. Those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. 8794 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up House Bill Number 8791 as contained in Committee Report Number 1028 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of this said measure.
The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 8791.
House Bill 8791, An Act Providing for the Comprehensive Regulatory and Legal Framework for Collective Investment Schemes.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we recognize the Honorable Gwendoline Garcia to sponsor this said measure.
Honorable Gwen Garcia is now recognized. Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt the explanatory note of House Bill 8791 as my sponsorship speech.
We join the honorable author, Madam Speaker, and that we move that the explanatory note be made as a sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpret on this said measure, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8791 as contained in Committee Report Number 1028.
Uh, is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, those in favor of House Bill 8791, say aye. Those not in favor, say nay. The ayes have it, 8791 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up House Bill Number 2363... House Resolution, I'm sorry. House Resolution Number 2363 as contained in Committee Report Number 1027, and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said resolution, so move, Madam Speaker.
Uh, the Secretary General is directed to read House Bill... House Resolution.
House Resolution 2363, a resolution urging the Department of Finance, Bureau of Internal Revenue, and/or Security and Exchange Commission to immediately liberalize the rules and regulation implementing Republic Act 9854-56, otherwise known as the Real Estate Investment Trust Law of 2009, with a view to successfully launch and sustain the RIT industry in the Philippines as envisioned and ordained by the RIT Act by I, reflecting and implementing the value-added tax exemption for the transfer of real property from the sponsors to the RIT in accordance with Republic Act 10963, otherwise known as Tax Reform and Acceleration and Inclusion Law, removing the escrow requirement for RITS under Revenue Regulation 13-2011, restoring the minimum public ownership requirement of one-third of outstanding capital stock of the RIT as initially fixed by the RIT Act, and adopting other measures may be necessary such as amending the rules governing property fund managers for RIT in order to sustain the growth of the RIT industry in the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the Chairman of the Committee on Economic Affairs, Honorable Gwendoline Garcia, is present before the plenary, and that we move that we adopt House Resolution Number 2363 as contained in Committee Report Number 1027, so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not? House Resolution 2363 is adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up House Bill Number 8719 as contained in Committee Report Number 1001, and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure.
The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 8719.
House... 8719, an act establishing and institutionalizing the seal of good local governance for local government units and allocating for this purpose the seal of good local government fund, governance fund.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor this said measure, we now move to recognize the Honorable Pedro Acharon.
Honorable Acharon is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. May I request, Madam Speaker, that the explanatory note be considered as the sponsorship speech.
Madam Speaker, we also join the honorable author and move that the explanatory note be made as a sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpret on the measure, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8719 as contained in Committee Report Number 1001.
Those in favor of House Bill 8719, say aye. Those not in favor, say nay. The ayes have it, 8719 is now approved on second reading.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we take up... We consider House Bill Number 8741 as contained in Committee Report Number 1017, and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure.
The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 8741.
House Bill 8741, an act recognizing the Faith Academy as an educational institution of international character and granting the academy certain prerogatives to promote its development.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor this said measure, I now move that we recognize the Honorable Ramon Durano.
Um, Honorable Red Durano is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of the said bill be used as my sponsorship speech.
Madam Speaker, we also join the honorable author and move that the explanatory note be made as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpret on this said measure, I now move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments, I now move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8741 as contained in Committee Report Number 1017, so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, those in favor of House Bill 8741, say aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill 8741 is now approved on second reading.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we take up House Bill Number 8785 as contained in Committee Report Number 1024, and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure, so move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 8785.
House Bill 8785, an act promoting Philippine indigenous or traditional writing systems and providing for their protection, preservation, and conservation.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor this said measure, we recognize the Honorable Ramon Durano.
Honorable Red Durano is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of the said bill be used as my sponsorship speech.
We join the honorable author, Madam Speaker, and move that the explanatory note be made as a sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpret, I now move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
There being no committee and individual amendments, I move, Madam Speaker, that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8785 as contained in Committee Report Number 1024.
Those in favor of House Bill 8785, say aye. Those not in favor, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill 8785 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we take up House Bill Number 8795 as contained in the Committee Report Number 1032. May we request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure, so move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 8795.
House Bill 8795, an act strengthening the National Museum of the Philippines repealing for the purpose Republic Act Number 8492, otherwise known as the National Museum Act of 1998 and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor this said measure, may we recognize the Honorable Ramon Durano.
Representative Honorable Red Durano is again recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of the said bill be used as my sponsorship speech.
Madam Speaker, we join the honorable author in moving that the explanatory note be made as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpret on this said measure, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments, I now move to close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8795 as contained in the Committee Report Number 1032, so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, those in favor of House Bill 8795, say aye. Those not in favor, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill 8795 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up Additional Reference of Business.
Um, the Secretary General is directed to read the titles of... Additional Reference of Business.
Additional Reference of Business, House Resolution Number 2365, resolution urging the Office of the President to reconsider the appointment of Honorable Benjamin Docno as Secretary of Department Budget and Management based on the findings during the Question Hour.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we consider House Resolution Number 2365.
Uh, the Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 2365.
House Resolution 2365.
House Resolution 2365. Secretary General.
House Resolution 2365, resolution urging the Office of the President to reconsider the appointment of Honorable Benjamin Docno as Secretary of Department Budget Management based on the findings during the Question Hour.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 2365.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, we adopt House Resolution 2365, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we are in receipt of the Bi-Camerar Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Joint Resolution Number 26 and Senate Joint Resolution Number 13 on Extending the Period of Availability of Funds Intended for Victims of Human Rights Violation During the Marcos Regime Until December 31, 2019. In accordance with our rules, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Camerar Conference Committee Report.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not? The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resume.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up Additional Reference of Business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the resolutions.
The Secretary General is directed to read the resolutions.
Additional Reference of Business, Resolution, House Resolution 2366, resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives of the People of the United States of America and the family of George Herbert Walker Bush, former President of the United States of America.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 2366.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, we adopt House Resolution 2366. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 172 as contained in Committee Report Number 1029, and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure.
The Secretary General is directed to read the said measure.
House Bill 172, an act providing assistance to new graduates by waiving government fees and charges collected in connection with issuance of documents required in their application for employment.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor this said measure, may we now recognize the Honorable Estrita Swansing.
The Honorable Swansing is recognized.
Madam Speaker, I submit to adopt the explanatory note as my sponsorship speech.
We join the honorable author, Madam Speaker, and move that the explanatory note be made as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpret, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 172 as contained in Committee Report Number 1029, so move, Madam Speaker.
Those who are in favor of House Bill 172, please say aye. Those not in favor, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 172 is now approved on second reading, congratulations.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 7513 as contained in the Committee Report Number 723, and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure.
The Secretary General is directed to read the said measure.
House Bill 7513, an act declaring the time between 10:00 in the evening and 5:00 in the morning as unsafe hours, providing the loitering, roaming around, sleeping, or mindering of children in public places during these hours, prescribing penalties for violations committed by their parents or guardians, and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Leader.
To sponsor, Madam Speaker, on the said measure, may we recognize the Honorable Divine U.
We recognize Honorable Divine U.
Madam Chair, may I move to, um, refer the explanatory note as my sponsorship remarks.
Madam Speaker, we join the honorable author and move that the explanatory note be made as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not, the motion is approved, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpret on this said measure, I move that we close the period of...
I think there is somebody who wants to interpret. Majority Leader. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 7513.
Is there any objection, the Chair? It is not? Uh, there is suspension to the liberation of House Bill 7513. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we consider House Bill Number 8784 as contained in Committee Report Number 1023, and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure.
The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 8... The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 8784.
House Bill 8784, An Act Increasing the Benefits from Service Charges of Rank-and-File and Supervisory Employees, Amending for the Purpose Article 96 of Presidential Decree Number 442 as amended, otherwise known as the Labor Code of the Philippines.
Madam Speaker, to sponsor this said measure, may we recognize the Honorable Dennis Logan.
Dennis Logan is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note be the sponsorship speech.
Madam Speaker, we join the author and move that the sponsorship speech, the explanatory note be made as the sponsorship speech.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpolate on this said measure, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House Bill Number 8784, as contained in Committee Report Number 1023.
Those in favor of House Bill 8784, please say aye. Those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. 8784 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we are in receipt of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on the disagreeing votes on House Bill Number 7385, Renewing the Franchise Granted to the Philippine Communications Satellite Corporation to construct, install, maintain, and operate in the Philippines ground satellite terminal stations for telecommunications with satellite facilities and delivery to common carriers. Mr. Speaker, in accordance, Madam Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none, we ratify said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on House Bill Number 7385. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up House Resolution Number 2339. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read House Resolution 2339.
House Resolution 2339. Resolution urging President Rodrigo R. Duterte to resume the peace negotiation between the government of the Philippines and the National Democratic Front of the Philippines and complete the comprehensive agreements on social, economic, and political reforms to lay the basis for a just and lasting peace.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 2339. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend consideration or inabeyance and then move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resume.
Madam Speaker, I move that we withdraw the earlier motion to adapt the Resolution Number, House Resolution Number 2339.
Is there an objection?
And suspend consideration of the House Resolution. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Minute suspension, Madam Speaker.
Session suspended. Session resume.
Madam Speaker, I move for the adoption of House Resolution Number 132 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the House Resolution. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read House Resolution 132.
House Resolution Number 132. Resolution congratulating, commending Marlon Tapalas for winning the World Boxing Organization Bantamweight Championship in Ayutthaya, Thailand.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, moment suspension.
Session suspended. Session resume. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt the amendments as contained in Committee Report Number 1031 for House Resolution Number 132. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 132, as contained in Committee Report Number 1031, as amended.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. House Resolution 132 is adopted, as amended. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend for one minute.
Session suspended. Session resume.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we take up on second reading House Bill Number 8733, as contained in Committee Report Number 1012, and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure.
The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 8733.
House Bill 8733, An Act Providing for a Comprehensive Nuclear Regulatory Framework, Creating for the Purpose the Philippine Nuclear Regulatory Commission and Appropriating Funds Therefore.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize that one of the authors thereof, the Honorable Virheyo Lacson of Manila Teachers Party List, to sponsor this said measure.
Honorable Virheyo Lacson is recognized.
Madam Speaker, may I request that the sponsorship speech be the explanatory note of the bill?
Majority Leader. Adopt, adopt the explanatory note? Is there objection? The Chair here is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate on the measure, I move that we close the period of interpolation.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no individual or committee amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading House Bill Number 8733, as contained in Committee Report Number 1012.
Those in favor of House Bill 8733, please say aye. Those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8733 is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we authorize all committees to conduct meetings or public hearings if deemed necessary during the House recess from December 13, 2018, to January 13, 2019. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
I move for suspension of the proceedings for a few minutes.
Session is suspended. Session resume.
My fellow representatives, Christmas is the best time to thank all those who have helped us do our jobs. During the first two and a half years of President Duterte's term, the Executive put in place a set of policies to guide the country's economic and infrastructure development in the coming years. For this part, the Legislative enacted a set of laws in support of those policies. During the Day of the State of the Nation Address last July, I accepted the offer of support of many representatives who elected me Speaker of the House. It's an honor to be a House Speaker, and a position that I do not take lightly, and I thank you all for your support and cooperation. As you have seen, my leadership and management style as Speaker is still similar as when I was President. The key words are hard work, selectively hands-on, especially in shepherding the 2018 Sona bills of President Duterte to passage by the House, strict, but hopefully fair and open-minded. Since the third session of the 17th Congress opened in July this year, as of an hour ago, we have already processed about 1,361 bills, approved 492 of those measures. We have approved 492 measures, including 95 passed into law, 39 bills ready for the President's signature, 27 with ratified by Cameral reports, 25 on Bi-Cameral Conference Committee, 22 approved on second reading, plus 38 resolutions approved. We have processed an average of 33 measures per day. Congratulations. More important for me, shortly after I assumed the speakership, I told you, my colleagues, that my goal is to implement the legislative agenda of President Duterte. And you have seen that the legislature that the House has prioritized these past six months were the priority bills announced by the President in his 2018 State of the Nation Address. My concern is not my legacy as Speaker. My concern is to support President Duterte's legacy in the year that I have as Speaker. And as of yesterday, the House can report with confidence that we have already passed the President's entire legislative agenda as he announced in his 2018 State of the Nation Address. So you all deserve congratulations and thanks. Thus, the country already has a good policy framework in place, supported by good legislation. There will always be room for making new policy and legislation. And next year, we will be able to attend to your pet bills. But on the whole, I think it's time to pivot from mere policies to implementation. We must harvest the results during the final three and a half years of President Duterte's term. The area of government that is most responsible for this is the Executive. For the remaining months of the 17th Congress, I ask the House to be prepared to give the implementing departments and agencies the support that they may need to the extent that they make this pivot from policy to action, such as by way of House resolutions from us, the elected representatives of the people, or through the helpful exercise of House oversight functions. Next year, we'll expect the oversight committees to be very active in the next months or so. Meanwhile, let us enjoy this Christmas break with the assurance that we have done our best despite the short time given to us. Merry Christmas and a productive new year. Thank you. This session is adjourned until the 14th of January 2019 or unless the President declares that we should have a special session prior to that. Thank you once again. Session is adjourned. Thank you once again. Session is adjourned.